Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to I'd like to welcome everybody to the Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can everyone please stand and face the flag and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item two, approval of the agenda. I would like to request a motion to remove the following articles of agreement. Just because of the most recent things with the state where the state has made a decision on H-454. And I'd also like to remove executive session at this time, there's no need to discuss a personnel matter.
I'll make the motion.
A motion's been made, any discussion?
I just want to add that I've got the minutes for April 10th. I did listen to the first part of it because I was able to.
Okay.
So I would like to add, I'm going to pass that out. We don't have to approve it tonight, but I did get.
So on the motion that's on the table, do you, is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve the agenda?
Yes, I guess it's got that in there. Yes.
A motion's been made to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You will be handed out minutes at the end of this meeting regarding our April 8th meetings to read during the month and then come back and we can discuss them further. All right, moving on, any general public comments? No general public comments. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve approval of the minutes of April 10th, 2025?
No, that's the one we're doing, where we're holding.
We're holding the April 10th, that's right, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay.
My bad. Do I have a motion to approve the May 8th amendments? Mike?
I'm on that one, so it's okay.
You're on that one? Okay, all right. So do I have a motion to approve May 8th, 2025 meeting minutes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it was the May 8th ones that I'm off, it's the April 10th one.
You're on the April 10th one, you're off, okay.
I was online.
Do I have a motion to add Mike Mosher to the role?
It wouldn't be a motion, it would be a correction.
A correction, okay. Do, can we make that correction without a vote? Do we need a vote to make that correction?
Correction will come through the.
Is this April 10th we're correcting?
This is May 8th, the just, board member wasn't attendance is not listed.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, do I have a motion to approve May 8th, 2025 minutes? Okay. Any discussion? Further discussion? All approved, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Sustained? So moved. Okay, approval of the warrants, do I have a motion to approve warrants?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve the warrants. Do we have any discussion about the warrants? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Sustained? So moved. All right, moving on to superintendent's report, informational only.
I just have two things, real quick, I just want to say congratulations to the families and to the students, Class of 2025. I know that with the high school graduations, it's difficult for me to get to all three just because West Rutland and Polton at the same time. So typically myself and Lisa Madison alternate. This year Lisa had asked to attend Polton's because she had a family event, so I was at West Rutland again this year. But I will be at Polton's next year and Proctor's on Saturday morning. But great ceremonies from what I've heard, the weather held off for the most part. I just want to say congratulations and wish our students the best of luck in their future endeavors. In addition, you know, the big item that traditionally, we're really worried about budgeting and start thinking about next year, obviously, you know, the next big cause for concern or just discussion will be H-454 in terms of what that really means for us. At this point, we don't really know what the impacts will be. I know I've had a lot of phone calls, some emails from people asking what's going to happen, what's next. All that we really know is of right now is that by December of next year, that the idea would be three maps will be presented in terms of how the state will be redistricted. We do know that there is a preference towards supervisory unions as opposed to school districts. So we'll have to wait and see what those maps look like. I know that a lot of people ask that in the meantime, is there anything we can do? And I think it's really just pay attention, just to see what's going on, read the local newspapers, just follow the legislature, but also reach out to your local senators, representatives and just share your concerns. I know one of the concerns that I have routinely shared with them is around the foundation formula. And I think, you know, the reason why I discuss this is on paper, yes, you know, selflessly we can look at from a school district standpoint, you know, we would be receiving a lot more money. You know, that Corey Valley has traditionally been a very low-spending district, one of the lowest spending in the state. The foundation formula, particularly a number just a little bit north of 15,000, would significantly increase the amount of money that we have available for our students and, you know, for programming. But there is a downside to that, and that is in terms of the cost to the taxpayers. And I know that people have said, well, then, you know, a district could just make the decision to, you know, just not take, you know, down 80% of that money and just they could reduce the taxpayer cost, which in doing that doesn't, it kind of negates the whole purpose of the foundation formula. So, you know, a district could make a decision to say, well, instead of the 15,000, we'll take 80% of that money and then we'll just put it back to taxpayers to save money. But all you're doing is just creating further inequities because another district could, you know, vote to increase their expenditures by 10% and the community could approve it. So I think there's a lot for the legislatures to look at, to work through. I think one of the reasons why they want the map is that they want to see what things would look like and start doing some scenarios around funding. But I know that they're probably doing that right now because they have the grant list, they have all the information that they really need to start really looking at financial impacts of this. But I know that, as I said before, that, you know, Governor Scott, when he initially rolled this out, did say that the purpose of this was to increase the quality of education for our students, access to programming, as well as reduce the tax burden on our community members. And I think my frustration has been, since he said that, I think a lot of the actions have not done that. And so I think, you know, as I've said to a few of our representatives and senators today, I look forward to working with them closely and trying to make sure that H-454 really truly will benefit our students and really truly will benefit our taxpayers. It won't be, you know, three or four years down the road where all of a sudden people are like, wait a minute, where's the savings? You know, we're paying more in taxes and we've lost local control. And I think that's another issue that people, some people didn't realize with foundation formula is there is no local control at this point, that community members no longer vote on the school board. So if you have a 20% homestead property tax rate increase, you just have to just take it on the chin and just move forward. So it's going to be an interesting year, a couple of years, just to kind of see where we're at. But I think I'll, you know, at the July meeting, I'll know a little bit more. I know there's a meeting tomorrow online with the VSA and VSBA. So everyone here should have received a link to that webinar. I would encourage you to view it, you know, if you can't view it live, you can view it recording. It should provide a bit of an overview of what the implications are going to be around H-54 and really what school boards and districts and supervisory unions should be doing in the meantime. Instead of just kind of, and how we can, you know, proactively work with our communities and our legislatures. Our legislators, so. I'll be more happy to answer any questions about any of that that they can, so. I do know, there was a question around class size minimums, which was in 424. That is something which they did say that won't go into effect till 26, 27. And even so, there would not be a hard stop, so a school will not necessarily be closed. I think we were looking at a three-year window around that. But you have to take a look at, you know, you have to really be trying to do something about that. You can't just sit there and say, well, it is, you know, there's nothing else we can do. I know that there are some small schools, maybe within our SU or the region, that geographically there really is not a lot they can do. And I think that's just something which we'll have to talk about, so.
Can I ask how the, so, and the districting size is set, they ended up with the 4,000 to 8,000, is that?
Correct.
So can you talk a little bit about how you see the relationship between school size and district size? Or are they not yet in the same, kind of in the same?
How I see it or how they see it?
Both.
Well, I mean, I think where you look at the school district, if you look at 4,000 to 8,000, when you look at 4,000, we'll just use our, the Rutland County area. So you're really looking at if Mill River, our GRCSU and Slate Valley were to combine, we would be student population just a little bit shy of 4,000 students. So that kind of gives roughly what's that? If we would fold in, let's say, you know, Rutland Northeast and then Rutland City, then we would be in that sweet spot between 4,000 and 8,000 students. And so where you're looking at in terms of class size, I think that's something which, you know, we, I was at a meeting with Wells Springs last week where Representative Pritchard and Senator Williams were at. And Representative Pritchard had said that their goal really is regional high schools. You know, they're really not going to touch elementary schools now, they want to go regional high schools. So if you really would look at that large 4,000 to 8,000 area where you have Arthur High Schools, you have Rutland High, Mill River, Fairhaven, you have Otter Valley, that's a lot of high schools within that area. So then what they look at is, you know, whoever that, whoever that new board is that you just would be taking a look at, how do we get to a smaller number, whether they three, you know, three or four high schools? And I think that's where they're just trying to take a look at. So there are pros and cons, obviously, to this. When you look at the pros, a larger high school, more opportunities for students in terms of programming, in terms of course offerings, you're looking at, you know, extracurricular activities, but you're also looking at, you know, geographical headaches, logistics. You're also looking at equity standpoint where a student who might have to travel 50 minutes to go to, to go to school may not be able to stay for after school because there may not be an activity bus running. I mean, so there's just a lot of scenarios, and I think that's, the only thing we had asked is just a more of a pause because hopefully in the next two years, there are a lot of things that they, I don't think they've quite considered yet in terms of, you know, moving to a school district that, you know, will actually, you know, increase the education opportunity for our students, but still reducing costs. And I think, you know, and that's just something hopefully they will do and they'll, you know, I know that the committee that they're forming, the one thing that the VSA and the VSBA and the VPA had asked is that you'd have some representatives from the educational community on that. And they decided they did not want to do that, that would solely be based, they were going to have a few retirees. And we don't know how that's going to be selected as of yet, so, but, so I think that there, those are some good questions. I mean, another big question that we should be asking is around capital debt, too. In terms of as you form these new districts, you know, people, it's just, you know, when I married my wife, you know, she incurred my debt and I incurred hers, and it's like, you know, that was part of the for worse part as opposed to the better. But I think it's where you, when you look at the merger of a large school, if a school district has debt, has, you know, large bonds, has, you know, property that they still money on, how does that, how's that handled, who pays for that? So I think, you know, there are some big questions that still need to be answered, so. And the 4,000 to 8,000, it's, I've worked in large suburban high schools.
Yeah.
And I know that there are, there are pros and cons to a large suburban high school.
Sure, I went to a, to a larger suburban high school. I guess I'm kind of curious about the extent to which you think that the, that number is an impetus for consolidation and the relationship between the two, I think you answered that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
I think that's how they came to that number, is there a reason to force districts and SUs to merge. But like I said, it will be interesting to see what the maps come up with. And I do believe, and I say this, that in a map, I think that in a variety of scenarios, that no Corey Valley school will be in existence in five years. So that will all be merged, that's just the reality, that's a reality of this, that, that will, you know, just be divided up. We don't really know, and like I said, it depends on what the map is, and I say that not to scare people, but also.
Corey Valley won't exist or the schools won't exist, sorry, just to clarify.
The GRCSU could be gone and the schools could be gone, yes. Because as you look at that, the regional high school, and when we look at our three high schools, we have 385 9 through 12 students. And I think when we look at 7 through 12, you look at just over 500 students. So that is a, a small high school for one high school. And, you know, like I said, you look at Otter Valley, you look at Arthur High Schools, Mill River, Rutland City, Fairhaven, there are a lot of schools that need to decide, so you're, but you're going to have to look at facility size, the state of facilities. So there's just a lot to consider. And I do believe that'll be up to a new board to make those decisions, too, when they merge. It will not be up to this board.
Yeah.
So. And that's just a scenario that I think taxpayers and community members just have to understand that this is the direction that the state's headed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to principals' reports, informational only. Who wants to go first?
I can go first, yay. I would just like to echo the Class of 2025's graduation, although the paper did say it was tears and rain. It was definitely rain in my eyes and not tears, and so I just want to clarify that.
Noted.
No, thank you. The only other thing that I would like to talk about is we had Kate Mezner, the author, come. We installed a Story Walk on the Proctor Trail behind our school and we had the elementary up and she did two great presentations about what it means to become an author. And both were tailored to the individual age group that she was talking about. And then that evening, we did a book giveaway for the community, which was really well attended. It reminded me of those classic book fairs where, you know, to see the kids coming out with a pile of books. So a huge thank you to Linda McEwen, who did a lot of that for our school. And if there's anything in my board report that you have questions about, I would be happy to answer those.
And the Story Walk is in the Come Alive book, which is Rutland County.
Come Alive book, so if you have someone doing that, a little one doing that, come on over. And we will be updating that in the fall with a new story, too.
Great, thank you. Jay?
All right, the little ones.
The little ones.
So I'll echo wonderful graduation, great evening, wonderful support by the West Rutland community for our students. I want to give a shout out to Nancy Bruno, who's a fifth grade teacher who's retiring after 25 years. And that was actually after another career that she had had in advertising and marketing. So well-deserved retirement to Nancy, very much going to miss her leadership. That's it, there's a ton in my report, from National Honor Society to our outdoor gardens to just everything in between. It seems just great stuff going on as with all of our schools. So I can entertain any questions, but a lot of it's right in the report.
Great.
Pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Jay. You're up.
Thank you. We had a fantastic sixth grade promotion Monday night where we actually had Zoe Reynolds, who was the saloratorian from Proctor High, come down and she gave a speech to our sixth grade. It was very nice to hear her again. She did a nice job at graduation as well. And then we ended our school year with the annual sixth grade versus staff kickball game. And I instructed my staff that we would not lose and we in fact did not lose. Put a little wager on the table and the sixth graders wanted to do confetti poppers. And I said, absolutely, if you win, we'll clean it up, if you lose, you'll clean it up. So some great pictures of them rolling around in their own confetti with brooms on the sides. Great, I can also answer any questions, but we had a fantastic school year and are really excited for next.
Perfect, thank you. You're next.
Ditto.
I should report, Joe.
I, like with Jay, when I was writing this, it's like, what did we do this past month? And it was just like, boom, May was crazy and the first couple of weeks of June, there've been a lot of great things going on. I do want to say thank you. If you've never been, Polton has an art day and they actually were smart, they canceled it on Friday and pushed it to Tuesday. And the weather, it was one of those one-nice-day between the 10 days of all the rain. But West Rutland's band came down and played on Main Street, so it was kind of nice, you know, starting to get other schools involved. And it's a community thing, but we do a lot of stuff at the high school, too. And just one cool thing we did, and you can see it in Kristen's report, too, is, I don't know why we've never done this before, but we brought our seniors down after graduation practice in their caps and gowns and had them walk around the library. And it was so funny because the first time, all the kids are like, oh, what do we do? What are we, they're high-fiving, they're hugging, and it's kind of, it was just a nice thing to, you know, like we said, we bring our athletes down in their uniforms, why don't we bring our grads down there? And even the kids that were like, well, I went to Wells or Middletown, it's like, I don't care, go down there, you know these kids. Some of these kids are going to know anyway, so. Just hopefully started a good tradition on that. Again, any questions?
I went to Poltoni Elementary graduation and it was Mr. Harrington who retired after many, many years of teaching history. And the kids were really cute with him. They also had to say something nice about every student. Each student had to pick a student and say something nice about them. And that, that was really, they were very serious about it, which I thought they were going to get silly, but they didn't. They really were very serious about it and it was a great graduation, I just want to say that for Kristen.
I do want to say, I'm sorry, just jump in one more thing, bring me to that. We had our lunch in on Tuesday and we had one of our custodians retire, Ed Olson, he's been there 19 years. And the staff really came together, we got him a bunch, you know, a lot of great gifts, surprised him at the, you know, and again, he was just, he was really, but, you know, says a lot, like, and the kids were, he's down in the lunchroom there in the cafeteria during lunchtime and the kids came up to him on Monday and Tuesday and were like, oh, we're going to miss you. You know, I mean, it was just, it was really nice to see, you know, it was just a staff member like that.
Is that his picture in the front of the, the school?
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, he's not wearing a hat, so you don't.
I knew there was something different.
I have.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, moving on to old business. School consolidation, I think, I think, you know, what, I don't know what the board wants to do, but I think at this point, the state's pretty much going to handle that for us. So, so I think maybe right now we should probably table this and, and just sit back and see what, see what the state comes up with for a plan. It's unfortunate that we don't have our own control over how we consolidate, but.
There's no, there's no proactive, I mean, measures here, right?
I, I can't say.
Not in terms of consolidation specifically, but, I mean, that's what we're talking about. But just in general, I feel like you were saying there's no control, like, what's the, is there, is there, what's the space for movement? You know?
It's really the legislature, they basically said that they couldn't care less what school boards, teachers, parents think. I mean, I think they said that pretty loudly.
Yeah.
When they said they didn't want any of those people on the committee, that they felt like they were better qualified
I know.
to make those decisions, so.
Yeah. So I mean, I, you know, I don't know if anybody else wants to, wants to talk about that or if they feel differently than me, but.
Make a motion to table to the future uncertain.
Okay, a motion has been made to table school consolidation discussion.
Future uncertain.
Future is uncertain, and do I have any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sustained? So moved.
Eric, can I ask a question?
Yes.
As part of consolidation, I did reach out to consultants as requested by the board. Would you like me to reach back out to those, the two individuals and the company to let know at this time we are going to be putting them on pause, but if we need their services, would you reach back out to them?
I think that would be prudent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item B, preschool.
I'd like to table, I would also like to table that.
The pre-K thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on tabling the pre-K discussion?
I make a motion to table it.
K motions been made to table the pre-K discussion. Any discussion? Nope, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sustained? So moved. C, drivers' education. Who would like to speak to?
I was going to start. I can speak to this. So for the past couple of years, we've been leasing a car, not the traditional lease that you would get as a consumer, but it's more of a, we pay on a daily, a daily rate for a car for dealership up in Burlington. It's an arrangement that was put together by one of our former drivers' ed teachers. So we pay $13 a day for the vehicle for most of the year. It's approximately a little over $4,000 a year. What I bring to the board tonight is to consider ending that arrangement and looking at purchasing our own driver's ed vehicle from a local dealership. The main reason is that it's just the distance is sort of an inconvenience, it's all the way in Montpelier. So every, every year we switch out the vehicle, so we have to send two people with two cars to drop that vehicle off and pick up a new vehicle. We have to take the brake out of the old vehicle and put the brake into a new vehicle. And then any times there's maintenance work that needs to be done, again, we have to send two people with two vehicles up to Montpelier. So purchasing a vehicle locally would make it a lot easier to get the vehicle. We'd have the constant vehicle from year to year, we wouldn't have to switch over the brake. It, based on our current costs, it would take about six years to, new vehicles are ranging around, in the packet, they range anywhere from between $24,000 and $29,000. So it would take about six, six years or so, six or seven years to equal the same cost that we are with the current leasing arrangement. But it would, it would be a lot more convenient to have it from a local dealership, especially as the vehicle gets older. We can bring it in for maintenance a lot, a lot easier. So in the packet, I provided a couple of different options. We are currently using Subaru Crosstrek, that's the vehicle that's leased. So I provided a quote for another Crosstrek from Oliver Subaru, which is here in Rutland, as well as an Impreza, an Impreza is similar to the Crosstrek, but it's a little bit smaller. It's got lower ground clearance. And then I provided a quote from Formula Ford for a Ford Escape. We have, all of our other vehicles that we have purchased have been from Formula Ford. We have the Ford Transits that many of our schools use for special education, as well as for regular ed as well, we have a couple. So I'm just looking for the boards.
Louis and Claudio did get back to me, he said he would, the Escape would be his preference, but he would take anything, so.
Okay.
You said it was in our packets?
It's in the board resources, yes. So the Ford Escape is $29,000, the Ford Impreza is $24,000, and the Crosstrek is $27,000 and change.
How much a year do we pay now?
A little over $4,000.
Does maintenance factor into all this from a, from a lease? I mean, I guess, I'm assuming that once a year you kind of trade out for a new car, that, so you're kind of avoiding ongoing maintenance issues?
So we're responsible for routine maintenance of oil changes, tire rotation, stuff like that. This year, in the past, I believe it was brought to the dealership that was leasing it to us. But this year, we brought it to a local dealership for the oil changes because it was just too much of an inconvenience to get it all the way up to Montpelier.
We're not even going to be here in six years, are we? When this evens out from leasing to buying? And we lease a few more, I mean, maybe something will change because isn't there election year next year, too, so?
Yep, I mean, that's an, that's an unknown as to where we'll be in three or four years. But it is an asset that we would be able to sell if we were no, if we no longer had high schools, but.
Is it your suggestion then to purchase instead of lease?
That is my recommendation, okay. We have a reserve fund for extracurricular that we could use for this, or we can just take it out of our local budget.
Can we think about it and come back in July?
There's no motion.
Can I make a motion?
No, there is no motion, so you can think about it until a motion's made.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we think about it till July.
I mean, we would just need something in place before school starts, so we would need something by the middle of August. The current vehicle needs to be returned by the end of the month.
Okay.
So, but that doesn't necessarily have to line up with when we purchase the new vehicle. I've asked the dealership where we've been leasing for a price to buy out the current vehicle that we have, and I've asked on numerous occasions and he still has not provided me a quote, so.
And I do think when we're setting up our classes through the DMV, we need the VIN number, so I think it needs to be before that. Like, it has to be before the start of the school year because you have to have that information to them before the first day of school.
So if we had it in July, that would be okay, you think?
I don't know what the. I don't know what the turnaround is. I mean, they can't start driving anyways until they've had a couple of hours under their belt in the classroom, but it is, it is a crunch, you know, with drivers that across three schools.
They'll be driving by Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the floor? Or no?
Linda, you made a motion, what was your motion?
Joe, let us think about it, and we'll come back in July and make a decision.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to, to table the purchase of a driver's ed car until July meeting.
Purchase or lease?
For purchase or lease. Any further discussion?
Out of these options, you said was, there was a preference from the current teacher or teachers?
I had spoke to Joe today, to, this morning, to see if the teacher, the, the new teacher coming in would have a preference on which vehicle of the three that I was presenting. And I think he just said the Ford Escape, and I've also spoke to Jay, and he doesn't really have a preference, so it's, and I don't have a preference on that.
So there's nothing, okay. Oh, yeah, I was going to say, because there are three kind of different cars, different price points, so just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the Impreza's sort of like the low, low end, so maybe, that would probably be my least preference, just, it's got, doesn't have a lot of ground clearance, it's a very small vehicle.
It sets real low to the, it's not, you don't have good visibility in a car like that, so I, I personally don't think it's a good choice for someone to learn in a vehicle like that.
And we currently just have the Crosstrek, which is why we looked at the Crosstrek, but I think that was, you know, people say, how come you got a, I think when we went up to that dealership, it's like, this is what we got, and it wasn't like, oh, can we, you know, pick and choose, they were like, you want it, this is yours.
We wanted to make sure it had all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
Which in that lower-priced range for most vehicles don't have all-wheel drive, except for Subaru's.
Okay, any, any further questions? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved. We will discuss driver's ed education, car purchase or lease in July.
We'll need to make a decision on it in July, it sounds like timeline-wise.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, yeah.
Yep, exactly. Moving on to new business, there's no new business, so we're going to move on to finance, monthly financials. Louis, do you have anything for us?
I don't really have any to report tonight, working on, we'll be closing the year here in another week or so, and then just reconciling all of our accounts and presenting to the, usually present to the board in August on how we end of the year, and if there's any issues or anything like that.
Okay.
Don't anticipate any.
Okay, moving on to personnel, then. Do I have a motion to accept the contract recommendations?
I'll make a motion to accept the contract recommendations.
Is there any discussion regarding the contract recommendations of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved. Moving on to resignations, we don't need to vote on resignations, I don't believe, to accept, so that's purely informational. All right, any general public? I do not see any general public. Future meeting date will be August 14th, 2025.
I just said we're meeting in July.
July.
Skip right over July.
Skipped over July, but it does say August on it.
It does.
July 3rd or something.
Let's date July 10th.
July 10th, okay.
July 10th.
So our next meeting, our future meeting day is July 10th, 2025.
Eric?
If, if the principals would like.
Eric?
To-
Patty's got something.
Patty, I'm sorry.
Can I go back to Joe with a couple of questions that I had? That was kind of glossed, skipped over and gone.
Right, you're right, because we set the agenda before you got here.
Oh, all right, well, I guess.
It may have been about the principal report, correct? But is this questions on the principal report, or?
No, well, the end of the year stuff, there's some questions about maintenance and stuff at the school I was curious about, so.
Is it appropriate to bring it up with the principal? It's not on the agenda.
Is it something that can wait till next, next meeting, or?
Sure, I can talk to Joe after.
And then we'll, then we'll discuss, I'm sorry. Okay, so future agenda items, do you want to move that to the future, future agenda items right now, Pat?
I'll face the Joe afterwards.
Okay, all right. So anybody else?
Once upon a time, we were going to hear about education quality standards or district quality standards and some of those changes that have happened, and the work that the district's been doing towards that, is that worth chatting about?
We can bring that in August, talk about equality standards. District quality standards, the board.
Yeah, right.
So the board should, should talk about district quality standards.
And should be, okay.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, we can talk about the equality standards.
Yeah. No, yeah, because I remember that we, it was a while ago, and you're saying that the-
We, we attended.
The Gens were doing some.
Yeah, yeah. We did go, and we did a training.
Liz, sorry, I called you Jen. I'm having it, it's a day, y'all. Liz and Jen had done some work on it or training around.
So we're happy to come back.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
If, also, if anybody has any agenda they want put on, anything they want put on the agenda for July 10th, 2025, if you could get that to me by, by July 2nd, that would give me an opportunity to make sure it's on there.
So can I just say, basically, what we were just handed out for minutes, that we need to place on an agenda discussion about what our expectation is for minutes, because is our expectation that minutes are going to be verbatim, or is our expectation someone's going to summarize them?
Okay, okay. Expectations of minutes. All right, anything else? All right, no executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
I want a motion.
Motion's been made to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed? So moved. July 10th.